So we'll go ahead and get started. I'll call this meeting to order. It's November 24th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. First thing on our agenda is the Phase One office reconfiguration. Mr. Town Administrator?
So, um, okay, I had a, I know that Chuck was, was in today. Walking around, talking with, talking with Eric and other, other staff. Mark was kind enough to come in and on Thursday of last week, walk around with some of his suggestions of, of potential reuses in certain, and especially over in the office where the, um, where HR is, is moving across to. Um, you all also have the configuration of the, um, the proposed areas of with Diane Dickerson coming over, the reconfigure with, with Tony and Lisa and myself. Um, and there is, uh, looking at overall because there, there is an outlet that is in one of the, one of the non-load bearing walls to be removed and repositioned, a light switch and an electrical outlet. Depending on what the situation is with, with the carpet with, and how that would be remedied. The worst case scenario to, to do that would be approximately $3,500 with $2,000 centered towards the carpet, $1,500 towards the, uh, the door frame, a dumpster for the, uh, for the area, for the new door frame to go between where the exist, where those, the two leather chairs are, there'd be a door put in there to go into the next office, which would be proposed to be mine. And then, um, the, uh, to knock down the, the wall that currently, um, um, oh, we've got a pet show off. I've got, I've got dogs. And, uh, for us to, um, uh, to bring a dumpster, uh, there to dump some stuff out, which we'll utilize that, we would utilize that dumpster in other areas for some other things that were not, uh, disposed of, uh, in other parts of, of Town Hall, whether it be on the third floor or would be, whether it be on the second floor. Uh, just in, just for general cleanup. It's not with any direction or intent, just general cleanup. And I take any questions.
Anyone?
No, I'm joking.
Yep.
Um, okay, so you're, you think it's going to be $3,500 all in to tear down a wall, build an office, take down a piece of another wall, close off a doorway? I don't, I don't see how we, I don't think, I think that's a very conservative number.
Well, I'm getting this from Eric and from Henry. This is not something that I chose. We're not closing off any doorway. Uh, we're creating a, I'm sorry.
So Room 307, which is now HR?
Yes, sir.
That door wouldn't be closed?
It would be closed and locked with a direction with an arrow, uh, pointed, let's say to the left, but we're not gonna sheet rocket and, and just eliminate that doorway.
On the plan that we have, I just didn't understand what that box was there.
Fair enough.
So you mentioned framing in a door?
Yes, sir.
Between 307 and 305?
Yes.
And then framing off or taking down the framing that was put in when we first had a town administrator? So that the wall that goes from the swinging door, basically from, um, where the leather chairs are now across to kind of in front of your existing office, um, the bookshelves? And then where the door is to the TA's office? That wall has to come down completely. And that's, so you're saying that there's gonna be $2,000 worth of carpet that would have to be repaired?
The worst case scenario, there wasn't, that was the, uh, worst case scenario about replacement repair of, of carpet, um, uh, in that area. So the counter would be removed? That, that is there right now and also that wall, which basically separates what is Tony's office and, um, the, uh, where, where Lisa is and where the, where the outer office is. So basically we're expanding the outer office, squaring that off. And Tony would move into my existing office and Diane would move into what is the lunch slash conference room?
Yeah, it's 305, eh? Um, I, I think the numbers are pretty light, Jim. I'm not gonna lie. But that, I don't think we can do the work that is on this plan. And basically you're saying that that's turnkey. Everything that you've outlined on the plan that we received would be done for a total of $3,500?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a, um, does, is there a plan that doesn't include 307? Let's say we wanted to make 307 into a, turn it back into a conference room or just put a conference table and have it be a conference room or an overflow room or, or what, interview room, whatever you have? What is the cost not to put a doorway between the existing office and HR?
Oh, I think that is probably, I think on, uh, when Tony showed up to me the other day, it's probably 150 to 200 dollars for the door frame. But the, the labor is done in-house.
So it's gonna be like for like, just like the other doors that are in the building? Or in the office at least?
It would, um, like for like, I'm sorry?
Are you gonna be reusing like the assistant town administrator's office door put in there or? Cause 150 to 200 dollars?
I'm gonna take the, I'm gonna take the, I'm gonna take the door that's currently going into my office and then move it there and, and the, the door that is currently going into Tony's office, he will use it for his, for his proposed new location where I am now. So there's no new doors to be purchased.
Just a door frame to, to support a
One door frame.
commercial door. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm questioning all of the numbers, Jim, to be honest. I mean, the 150 to 200 sounds light, even just for a door frame. Um, and the 3,500 for all this work to be done is, um, I, I can't see it getting done for that. I, beyond that, I, I think that, uh, it's an unnecessary change. I don't think it needs to be done. Um, I think it sends a bad message, not just to the employees, but also to the residents. Um, it creates that ivory tower for the town administrator and, um, I mean, early, early on, over the past couple of years, when we're talking about, um, the potential of moving Town Hall, you've always stood by, I don't care where I work, I can work in a closet. And that's, that's a quote from you. You've done, you've said it a few times.
Actually, a treehouse.
Pardon me?
Actually, it was a treehouse.
Yeah.
You've said closet to me because we talked about the one that goes between the school department and the hallway. Um, I just think right now we're trying to, you just told me today about the, the, the budget cuts we need to make. I mean, I just, we're, we're trying to pinch every nickel we can. I mean, you're trying to do that with, um, health insurance and I, I just don't think it's a good look, regardless whether it's, whether it truly is $3,500 or it's some other number. I just don't think this sends a good message and I, I don't think it shows good leadership from us or from you.
Thank you for your input.
Does anyone else have questions or comments for Jim? Go ahead, thank you.
Um, if the estimate is incorrect by, or in, and Jim is, has underestimated the cost by a large degree, I suggest we give him enough rope to hang himself and find out what it costs at the end of the process. Uh, and as I said at our last meeting, I don't know why we're micromanaging this project. Um, this is not our domain. It doesn't cost money. Like, let Jim reconfigure the office, um, along with the staff that approves in any way he wants.
If I could just reply to that, it's, we do, we have standing here, it's care, custody, control of that building. And, um, we have to do what's responsible. Jim, Jim may not be here or there could be somebody else that wants to do some other configuration of the offices. We can't just keep moving walls and, and, and building out different spaces. I, I just, I, I think, I don't think this is micromanagement. I don't think we're getting in the weeds. I think this is something that we absolutely should show some leadership on and, um, make the right choice.
Okay. Well, I disagree.
Mark, did you have a question or comment?
Sure. So I don't have a problem with move of the HR to the new space. I think, um, they are very crowded in where they're at. Um, I still, um, I, I do agree with Chuck that it's a bad look that we're spending money, um, on this when we are in such a budget crunch. Jim, can you comment where we're taking the money from?
Well, if, uh, we would, we could take it from the $160,000 that is sitting there for, uh, that is a combination of the other, of the other, um, areas, uh, the other, we did it at town meeting, the other capital improvements. So it has to be done. It has to be, uh, that money has to be used on, um, reconfiguration, rehab, uh, uh, anything like that. I would, uh, that's where a proposal would come from.
Is that the only option or is that your preferred option?
That is the, I think that's, that's the preferred option.
Okay. Um, so again, I'll say that that would be taking money out of a capital into, from the capital plan into something that we didn't actually plan for in the capital plan. And I know it's a small percentage, but it's still kind of breaking with what we said we were doing with that money. My bigger concern with this is we still haven't seen an overall plan for where everyone moves. What the two, six month, one year, two year vision is for where people end up in the building? Right? How we, what we can and can't mothball, right? Um, what the building looks like. And I really am leery to spend money on doing things until we know what we're the long, the long game is, right? We know that we're, you said, Jim, several times, you're planning to be in the building for five to seven years. Right? So what is the plan for the building for the next three years? Right? Where are we moving? I, we obviously have talked about moving the building department and that stuff around. Is there other plans or what else are we going to be doing? Right? Let's figure out how everyone moves in the right direction as a unit, even if it's in phases. So we know what every, where everyone ends up. Right? Cause maybe in the long run, it's best that your office, I'm just gonna say, throw it out there, moves over to where uh, Kelly's old office was. And then we just spent this money on taking out walls that we may not have needed to do. So I'd still like to see a, a full scale plan of the building of where, what we are doing rather than just these little onesie twosies things.
Well, the, from the, from the, the proposal you had before, it's not a onesie a twosie thing. I mean, we've, we've obviously identified areas of within the Town Hall. First of all, we're changing, um, what was originally proposed. I believe it was four years ago with identifying 36 King Street to purchase to move out to, to departments, to build a new senior center, to build a library. That was the idea of eventually vacating the building altogether. So considering that the message we received, uh, most recently, we will be staying there. Okay. So let's still, we wanna, we don't wanna spread the team out. We wanna keep the team as closely together as possible. And by bringing them up, uh, first of all, the, the, the finance team, the assessors team, the town clerk and IT, and they're all absolutely happy with where they are. And quite honestly, they're, 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 they're in good places. Now, we can't move the town clerk. She's got a massive safe in there unless we can move that. That's not going anyplace. The assessors are right across from the treasurer's office, which is part of the financial team. So we want to take what lands in buildings and bring them more in the mainstream upstairs in which, um, uh, it would, that's where the, on second floor, where Parks and Recreation is. It was rather. And by doing that, um, that, that basically identifies the areas as for staying together and for the workflow. And it's, uh, and there doesn't need to be a move after that.
So in the next three, three years for the building, the only thing you see is moving land use from the, from the ground floor to the second floor and no other reconfigurations?
I do not see anything else because it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense. Um, uh, because we, we will solve the area of potential, any expansion for, for, for offices, for personnel wise rather, of that is absorbed on, in the second floor in, in the new configuration, such as, for example, if the, if you know, something with the board of health, if we want to bring on um, a half time inspector, um, or anything else. Well, is there a place for he or she to land? You know, we would, there would be space available for that, for growth. That was one of the things that I had to the team in lands and buildings that you have to identify growth potential. Because count on us being here for five years. That's, if it happens, if we move sooner, so be it. But if we're here longer, then we'll deal with it, you know, beyond that.
Okay. And have we done an assessment on the systems on that side of the building to know what their lifetime expectancy is if they're better than on the other side or?
Um, it, it was, both, both are in a, according to our facilities manager, um, it's where it hit or miss. I mean, we could, it could last a couple of years. It could go. We had no idea that the air conditioning was gonna go in lands and buildings and that was a hit or miss and that, that is, that is now gone uh, in regards to that. So we have one system for the building. We don't have the ability to isolate any, any place and turn, turn utilities off. We have turned the water off in a number of different, on a number of bathroom areas um, throughout the building. But beyond that, we have not been able to discontinue any, any heat uh, or anything like that.
And the gym is going to stay in an area that has no AC?
The gym, um, I'm sorry, where, where is the gym? I apologize.
Gil Cooper room.
Okay, let's try this. Where's the old Cooper room?
Right next to land and buildings.
In that back corner.
Okay. So is that where the current, is that where the current, um, where the exercise equipment is? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
That would, that would stay. They have made, there's been no mention about that moving.
But there's no AC there.
All I can tell you, Mark, is that there, everyone is aware of that, that there has been, they worked. Um, people, people worked, um, did their exercise and workout after work there over the course of the summer. There was, there was no air conditioning there this summer. So I don't know if it's a fan thing that, that, that was in there or anything like that. But it has not been brought to my attention that it's unbearable. We have to find a new place for the, um, uh, for the exercise equipment. No one has said that whatsoever. And there was a, a lot of use there.
Okay.
Good questions.
I'm done. Um, you know, I, a couple, I look at it a couple of different ways. You know, Matthew, I, I agree. It's not the business that I, I wanna be in either. Um, as far as layout, um, and how, how the operationally is, you know, put together besides just consulting with us to see if it all makes sense. But the, um, the bigger picture I have is, you know, the town, the town voted in July um, for us not to change or move the building, you know, move out of the building and, and turn it into apartments and um, that, that whole methodology. So I'm kind of stuck with, um, looking at it from a point of, um, I'd like to see what that maximum number is, um, that we're allowed to do. I, I don't, I don't know what, what is that number? Is it 30%? You guys have mentioned it before. To that building before we have, we, we, we trigger all of the ADA and all the other things that would have to happen. We'd have to do a much greater um, project. Um, I wanna know what that number is and I think we should budget for it. It should literally get on the capital uh, in the cycle. Boom, this is it. Do I think the Town Hall can be worked in the exact way it is? I do. The problem I have with the Town Hall right now, it's not representative. It's representative of Littleton 30 years ago to me. When I look at, you know, it's kind of like walking into a smaller town. It's just not how, you know, when I walk into the clerk's office or any of the offices, it's just not conducive. So I wanna see this tied into a much bigger plan across the board to do as many upgrades as we can to that building with the thought process that we may be there a lot longer than five years, 10 years. I mean, that, it, it's not that unrealistic. Time flies when we're, when we're doing things like this. And with all the projects that we know that are going on with DPW, you know, potentially coming up next, Town Halls typically get kicked down the road until something happens, until, you know, until, you know, we, um, so I wanna do all we can for this building, but I think it belongs in the budget cycle to go up against everything else that's out there. So, um, and make it a much, a much bigger design, much bigger project and have it, have it laid out. And if that means this happens on this budget cycle, then so be it. Let's get it out there. So we see what it is. Throw the, throw the numbers out there. Um, because it, it's important to me. It's not like it's a, you know, I'm not giving it a backseat to anything. I, I just think that we're being a little bit short sighted and Jim is, you know, kind of band-aiding it, it, band-aiding it the best we can. And we're talking about a no cost move and no cost building this or, you know, putting a door frame in. That's not really solving the bigger picture that I, I would like to address. Um, and potentially all at once is to knock it all out. And then, okay, now we have live a, a space um, that our employees can be proud of and it's, um, we've taken full advantage of all of this room now that's been created by the other, um, you know, departments moving out and potentially gives us space, things we hadn't thought of. We talked about the gym equipment. Well, yeah, I would love to have the town employees have access to a gym in that building. Now I know we have the, the senior center, um, that has, has facilities. So maybe it's not as important. Um, but something of that ilk, you know, a, a more designed, a more desirable, uh, common room or for places like that, you know, the, the lunchroom, things like that, that we could, the small things that are gonna help us keep employees, um, in our town as opposed, you know, those, those little things. Um, so more to me, it's just, I'd like to see it as a, but part of a much bigger project. That's where I come down on this. And I don't need to know where everybody's gonna be, but I, I, let's, let's renovate. The, the town said, this is the building we want you in right now. Okay. Well, let's look at this realistically and see what we can do. A vacuum was created with everybody moving out. So we're expected to fill those spaces. It's not just a turnkey operation. It, it just doesn't work like that. So there's, there's a cost to this, to the decisions we make. And I think we should absorb as much of this as we can in a bigger scale.
Through a budget process.
Yeah, through the budget process.
Well, I thought, and I, I believe that the conversation, the last one on the, on the larger picture of with moving, um, the lands and buildings up to the second floor, that that was going to be discussed on, on, on Super Saturday and decided, uh, because there it is, it's currently within the budget. I mean, there is, there is, I shouldn't say within the budget. There are, there are, there are resources that, uh, are available if, 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 if the, if it's approved to, to spend the money on, on the move. I mean, I just hate with so many moving parts with the potential of, if there's opportunities out there for us to relocate and by looking at doing a large scale renovation of soup to nuts there, um, does that mean so, that, that means we're absolutely eliminating the deeply affordable units to go there?
It doesn't, but what it, it means that the town, the town has spoken. They have voted. Um, and whether that was an appetite, you know, the effect of a developer getting another building, whether it was the effect of many reasons, I, I'm assuming people voted on it, but it was pretty resounding. Um, if feedback that I think this board got and you too, Jim, to some degree, but I, I believe, um, it's kind of a, we'd just be playing a game if I said, okay, we, something comes available, a newer building, um, some of the discussions we've had are obviously in the background that have happened in the past. And maybe something makes a lot more sense. And we put it in front of the town and, and we find out, you know what? The reason why a lot of the people voted no last time is because they want us in this building in this complex, this, the Town Hall. So then we're right back to square one and we haven't done anything. Um, so I, 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 I know what you're saying. We put a lot of money into this, um, to do a, as much reno as we can inside that building. And then something becomes available. If five years, it's gonna be a harder sell potentially. Right? I, I, and because, well, now you've just spent all of that money, but I think it's the cost of doing business when you have a Town Hall that's, that's aging and we had some major, major departments move out. We have all of this space sitting there and, you know, I, I can't bear walking in some of the offices anymore and seeing papers stacked to the ceiling and just the compressed, I, open it up, yet really, really hit this hard. So I, that's where I'm coming from. And I, it might not be popular with the board, you know, but it's, it's just kind of where my mindset is overall.
It's, um, I don't think, I, I don't think it's prudent considering what, what is still outstanding in the, in regards to information or opportunities that are there to, for us to go in and just basically, um, commit ourselves for the next 15 years of doing the major renovation with spending millions. It's, it will take millions to go in and reconfigure it with all new systems, uh, throughout. It's, it's basically looking at the same thing that, um, with, with a Shaker Lane renovation, if you're looking at it. Now, now we have to go out and we've got to move people out of Town Hall. We have to find a temporary location. Uh, we, does that mean we have a bunch of trailers in the, in the, in the back parking lot? Uh, and I think there's way too many questions still outstanding of potential opportunities. And this is, um, I mean, this is, this is, this is something that is, you know, really basically nothing. I mean, you know, this first phase, the second phase, um, absolutely, you know, and, and, and making the proposal on, on Super Saturday with, with all the necessary information. And I know that, uh, the conversation, uh, we had after it was voted down at town meeting and rightfully so. What I heard was not yet, not yet. It's too much, too fast right now. So, okay, let's, uh, um, so let's go back to the drawing board because ultimately, look, all I know is we could stay there forever, as far as I'm concerned, if, if, but the whole thing was I was tasked with a deeply affordable senior housing. If that was the, if that was the powers to be that wished to have it there, that was that was the, that was the understanding. I'm trying to fulfill that from before and bring that to fruition and think outside the box and be as creative as possible with you know, having, getting, you know, achieving that. Or we just completely scrap it and say stay, everything has got to go between four ten and five fifty or find another location. So be it. I'll take my direction from from the select board and I will, but right now unless I'm told differently, that's where I am.
Right.
So
Go ahead, Chuck.
I was just gonna say, Gary, were you making the point that we should find out with the ADA compliance being thirty percent over five years? Um, thirty percent of the assessed value. Um, were you making the point, let's find out what that kicker is, like, spend up to it?
Potentially, or maybe not. I mean, I I'd like to know. I mean, the entire infrastructure isn't horrible. I mean, so it's I just don't know what is that, what is that number? What could we spend realistically? And, you know, if it's few hundred thousand dollars even to get this to, wow, we've really got because some of the spaces are are in pretty decent shape, but um, and I'm not talking about the heat system and all that. That's not going to change. That's not going to go away. Um so I, that's kind of what I was thinking of. Let's see what, how much we can get done reasonably without hitting that thirty percent, which I don't and I understand, Jim, what you're saying, because if you really want to, if you jump all in, you jump all in, and you're doing the whole heating system ventilation, you're almost gutting the building, moving out. And then I
You are.
I I was more in the hundreds of thousands of dollar project of doing the internal you know, structuring, making it, making it look good inside the best we could.
One thing that, one thing, and I'm sorry to interrupt, the one, the the one thing that we're forgetting here is the fact that you know, the 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 employees, the team down in the lands and buildings, I mean, you you have in your information packets, the fact that the challenges that they have. Storage, getting getting a temp in there, getting an intern in there. There's no space, confidentiality, workspace. I it there, there is, it's it's fraught with with issues. And um and we we have a nurse in a closet in the building next door where
I know.
you know, she should be where the where the Board of Health is. He needs an office. And and I think the building commissioner, I think the building commissioner should have a big enough office that he can bring and and do and spread plans out and everything, right? So right now, he's got to go up to the second floor. You know, bring a contractor up to the second floor and stand there and and do it that way. Which is not, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to say this for the optics. I mean, what is reasonable in 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 day to day operations? And you're talking about employee attraction or retention or anything? Um I I I I think, I think by not us really recognizing the very, very, very powerful voice. I mean, this wasn't, this isn't one or two people like complaining. This is a team that came together and said we need to do something different here. And I I I agree with them. And I support what they want.
So Jim, I have a question. If we take, if we take the we're we're talking two different things here now, but we have your plan for thirty five hundred dollars. We have the plan for lands and building, land use department for a hundred and sixty-ish thousand.
Right, yep.
Whatever. Let's say we take that hundred and fifty thousand dollars to town meeting and it fails. What is Plan B? And would you still have spent the thirty five hundred dollars on your office, or would you be doing something different?
Well, first of all, it's the worst case scenario is the thirty five hundred dollars. So
How can you say that?
I, all I can say that, how I can say that, Chuck, is the fact that I asked two professionals who are in the business.
Let's just assume it's thirty five hundred. I don't know bicker over how much it is, but you're, we're spending the money, we're spending some money. Would you still be spending the money if we weren't doing the land use thing next? If there was something else other than land use next, would you still be spending the money today?
If there was something else?
If if we, if if we went to town meeting and the vote to move land use from the first floor to the second floor failed, would you still go forward with the same plan you have on the third floor? Or would you be pursuing something else?
Well, there would have to be something done. Let's put it this way, with four people in that office, it does not work. So something would have to be done.
Or people in your office or four people in HR office?
Four people in, four people in my office. Doesn't work. So something would have to be done. Money would be spent someplace. I'm just in that's, that's all that's being presented. I understand what, I understand the question mark and and what if the, what if the hundred and fifty thousand dollars passed at Super Saturday?
So I think obviously, we can talk about hypotheticals for a really long time, and there's a lot of points where decisions are going to get made. Some of them are going to be within our control, and some of them are going to be wholly outside our control. But for me, the question is, these are our employees. They've told us what they need. Can we do better? The answer is yes. So I think we should do better. So that's why I'm in favor of moving forward with this now.
But they've already, they've already moved, right?
Oh, yeah, there's been, there's been, there has been two, one and one office that has moved and one that has, that has, that is in the process of of relocating. And thank you for, accounting has moved. They were extremely cooperative with moving to make, to provide the opportunity for HR to have the confidential area that they need, that they haven't had for how many years? Um, since you, you know, when HR was 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 brought on, you you you've expanded it, you identified it as a board. This is not, this is not a decision or or a situation that's been taken lightly. This, this is probably, this conversation with the team is probably going on ten months and back and forth and scenario and and everything like that. And and it's and clearly, there is there is, there is that need here.
If I might just add something about three oh seven, if um if we, obviously, it's going to be vacated. HR is moving across the hall to the space that the accounting department was in. Um, and Jim, you brought up um expandability, Gary, I think mentioned um opportunities for expansion. With us not doing anything with three oh seven right now, but putting a conference room, like Gary mentioned, a lunchroom or a common room or something like that, that affords us an opportunity for some growth and for some for some flexibility. Um, that I mean, what is, what is the plan with Diane Dickerson?
Diane, Diane Dickerson, as far as I'm concerned, she can stay there for a hundred years. She does a great job. She does a great job for the town. She works very, very hard. She's a very, very nice person. She's very pleasant. She's very, very helpful. She'll she'll help out in any way she she can, which she's a great employee. She's a fantastic employee. So I'm, as far as I'm concerned, she's there for as long as she wants. Anything beyond that, so it doesn't if, you know, for our opportunity, for our growth potential in terms of expansion, our expansion, you know, based upon the conversations we've had, our expansion is really going to go towards um, we'll go towards public safety personnel. And when we have an expansion opportunity, that's where we are at this point. And um, uh, like I said, and I'm, I I will, I will say it again. Four people in that office does not work. So how you want to do it from there?
So I'll rephrase Chuck's question. If Diana retires tomorrow, are you replacing her?
Absolutely.
So, so it's a long term that there's four people in your office?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, what is the square footage of the existing town administrator's office, Jim?
I don't know. I don't know.
Because I'm I'm pretty sure we've got four employees working in spaces that are smaller than what you have there. And each one of these is basically a, everybody's got their own, their own space. If we were to, if we were to say eliminate three oh seven, if we were to do um Diane into the conference room and not make any changes at this point until after we get more information, we go to town meeting or look for funding or that kind of thing. Um, I I think it's a terrible look.
It's a dead point. It's a dead point, Chuck.
Which part?
It's the whole, what what you're saying, it's a dead point to look for money, you know.
It's a bad look.
It's it's a dead, the the point, it's a dead point, because you know as well as I do, to go look for money to try and it's
I think, I said it was a land grab last time, Jim, and I feel the same way.
It's not a land.
First opportunity you have to put a, that's, that's
Not a land grab.
A big, a big
Can I take exception to that? I take exception to that statement.
It's, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
I just don't think it, it looks good, and I don't think we need to do it right now. I think Diane's in Australia until the end of Ju- July, January, or something like that. I I think we can address it in other ways. I don't think it's a dead point, Jim. It's your opinion.
Fair enough, Chuck. Fair enough. Fair enough.
Anybody else? Amy, we don't have public comment on the agenda for today, but if you want to make a brief statement, that'd be okay.
Um I I know this building is so hard for everybody. Um, I think what I would love to see is maybe a consultant, I know it should cost money to come in and make a short term and long term plan. I think there's a lot of decisions everyone's trying to make and maybe having an outside um you know, plan to just kind of look at um for a structure may be helpful. Um, I'm personally would be fine putting in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to um, you know, make sure that we keep our employees, not retain our employees, because when we lose them, um, it's, you know, it costs money to replace them and lost productivity. Um and yeah, I think our employees work really hard, and I think they deserve it. And um, I'm not really sure the town, well, I'll speak for myself. Um, really would want to entertain a really large renovation project, considering all the projects we're currently paying for. I think people may want to see some projects um roll off um the taxes before I would consider like a big renovation. But I know it's needed. The building is um not really functionable. So, thank you.
Amy, those moves are already made.
All right.
Just to clarify there, just, I mean
Chuck, did you have something to say? Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. I I mean, just for clarification, Amy, the HR department is moving across the hall. That's so we're taking care of those employees. The accounting department has already moved, moved down to the second floor of the old library. Um, so we we, I don't think there's anybody that doesn't want to take care of our employees. Just want to make that clear.
No, I know. It's a lot of choices to make in a tough budget, so. Understood.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. All right, um, I'd like to go ahead and and take a vote on this.
So is the motion, we are voting to approve the move and the expenditure of thirty five hundred dollars to refurbish the town administrator's office?
The move's done.
No, the town administrator's office.
So
So, like you said, HR has it. I will pay the thirty five hundred dollars myself. So it costs nothing.
Let's I don't think we need to go there.
No, I, I
I appreciate, I appreciate it. But
Thank you.
I don't.
Let's go ahead and um
May I, may I, Madam Chair? May I propose that we take a vote on leaving three oh seven out for now and just going with the status quo and moving Diane into the conference room?
No.
We never had, we never had that conference room before.
No, let's vote on the proposal as it was on the agenda.
I'm asking the chairwoman.
So Chuck, sorry, three oh seven is which?
It's uh
One hand at a time, please. Okay. And you want a vote to leave it the way it is?
I just, I'd like to amend what's in front of us right now. Obviously, Diane needs a space because we've already moved her stuff out of the space that she was in. Um, for good reason, because it's going to be a file, there's going to be files in there. Um and it's a lockable office. It locks from the hallway as well as from the office area. I get that. Um but just don't touch three oh seven right now. Leave that as a vacant room. Leave the town to the way it is. Don't take down walls and set Diane up.
Okay, I understand that's a counterproposal, but I think I would like, I'm going to hold a vote first on what was proposed initially.
Okay. Thank you for consideration.
Gary, can you uh come up with a motion on the fly here?
Um
We've got up to thirty five hundred dollars for the town administrator's office in three oh seven.
Okay, so we're mov- moving that the select board or that the um town allocate authorizes thirty five hundred dollars for the renov- up to thirty five hundred dollars for the renovation of the town administrator's office um expansion into room three oh seven. Including
From what funds, Jim? Can you add that to the motion, please?
The the funds that have been identified that were that it was a culmination of balances for previous capital improvement projects.
So as
Are there any other capital improvement projects that we've already said no to?
Is that a clarification question, Chuck, or or is this another?
I, I, I'll answer my own question. There are other capital improvement projects that were put on hold and and not approved that this would be jumping ahead of.
All right, so we're in the middle of of drafting a motion, please.
But this has been moved in second, and that's, this is the opportunity for more deliberation.
Did we get a second?
I seconded, I seconded the motion, and I will second it as amended with the clarification on the funding.
Okay. All right, moved by Matthew, or excuse me, moved by Gary, seconded by Chuck.
Seconded by Matthew.
No, Matthew.
Yeah. All right, let me try and get moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. Mark Ronbacher?
Come back to me, please.
All right. Matthew.
Matthews, yes.
Gary.
Uh, Gary's no.
Chuck.
Chuck's no.
Karen is a yes. Mark?
Ah, you waited.
Yeah, I'm going to go with a no.
I'll entertain a motion to as Chuck proposed.
Uh well, can we talk about it first? I don't, I'm not sure.
Just just redo three oh seven? Is that what you're proposing?
No. Well three oh, three oh, three oh seven would be empty just to, and I think it's already been kind of assumed that Diane's going to move across. So um with all due respect, I don't think we need to take a separate motion.
If I could have a point of clarification on why Diane is moving across the street, please. You are wrong, Mr. Jacost. Why? It's because it's confidentiality, because the walls over there are paper thin. And that's why you can hear the conversations between what is the old accounting office with uh the conversations going into uh into where Diane sits.
No, the the, what I said, Jim, was exactly what you told me, that we needed to be able to lock those files in there.
I I I never, I never said that to you.
Okay.
I thought the lockable files thing was was Michelle's files, not Diane's.
That's correct.
Right.
HR files.
Right. Okay, so All right, does anybody? So Chuck, you're saying that you don't think we need a motion?
Um.
To rearrange, okay.
Yeah, because we're not, we're not doing any. We're not affecting any change in that office. We're not. We're taking the conference room table out. Maybe we could put that in 307. And setting up workstation for a special projects coordinator.
Okay.
I, I really don't think, but you get consensus from the.
Well, I think it's a fair point. It's just, it's literally moving furniture, which I don't think requires a motion. Or about.
So what about taking down Michelle's walls in 307? I mean, that's basically of something that they're cube walls effectively, right? So those could be taken down for free effectively. Right? My objection isn't to the move, it's to spending money through the non-normal process. So.
I already explained though, Mark, that I would pay for it. And in terms of the walls that are in Michelle's, that will be done in-house.
So that's what I was saying. If you want to take down the walls in Michelle's office. That's fine by me. If you want to figure out what to do with that room, I think that's all good. Right? But I don't think we should be, you know. As, for, yeah, I don't think we should be spending money outside of the normal process.
Yeah, I think Michelle's walls aren't structural.
I don't even think they're.
They're modular.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Right. Actually, those, those walls might be able to be set up down on land used to create a space that will be private, but repurpose them.
Okay. Let's move on. Excuse me, let's move on to B. Sorry. Authorizing the town administrator to execute the MSBA documents.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is really this is something that I am, I am requesting. It's part of what MSBA was looking for the other day, that all the necessary, the votes, the certified votes, all the signatures, the were put together in order to submit it to the MSBA, MSBA. The other day, town council advised that I request a vote of the select board authorizing me to sign it as to move forward in the, in the project.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
I have a stupid question. What happens if we don't authorize you? What would that mean?
You'd have to ask town council, Mr. Yeah, Mark, you'd have to ask town council.
I, I mean, who, if you're not author. Have there been things that you've been supposed to sign before that you weren't authorized for? This is just something new because we're moving to the newer phase. I mean, we've signed a lot of documents with MSBA so far. It's this, what's different now than before? Just that we're looking to spend more money?
I, all I can say is town council wanted to just confirm that it was authorized by the select board. I, I thought the same thing, but I wasn't going to question town council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey. Gary.
All right.
You have a motion?
I, I will on the second. Well, thanks. There we go. Moves that the select board authorize the town administrator to execute the MSBA documents.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. Mark?
I.
Chuck?
Chuck's an I.
Matthew?
Matthews, yes.
Gary?
Gary's yes.
Karen is also a yes.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Right. Motion to adjourn? Well, before we adjourn, Jim, just so you clear the don't go spending your own money to do this because it was it was a no vote for the for the work.
Understood, Mr. DeCoste.
Well, you threw it out there again, so I just wanted to make sure you didn't want you to do that. And I don't think we could do that legally.
Okay, thank you.
Now motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. Mark?
I.
Chuck?
Chuck's an I.
Matthew?
Matthews, an I.
Gary?
Gary's an I.
And I'm also an I. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate this. Have a good evening. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too. Have a great Thanksgiving. Thanks.